Day, everyone.
Yes.
Hi Frank.
Hey Deborah.
See who am I not seeing? Hi Karen. Gordon. Jeff, Cheryl and Randy. Kevin, Derek, Julie. Hello?
Hello.
All right. Sixty. You're ready?
I think so, yes.
Okay. Call to order the regular meeting of the Riedel City Council. Roll call please.
Barely.
Okay, I'll speak louder. Mayor Garns.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
I see him there.
Okay. Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Woodall.
Here.
City Manager Knob.
Here.
Chief of Police Connor.
Here.
Finance Director Dillingham.
Here.
Community Development Director Caldwell.
Here.
Water Roadway Superintendent Jensen.
Here.
Waste Water Superintendent Taylor.
Here.
And City Clerk Dennis is present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, did you get Mayor Pro Tim Johnson here?
Got you now Gordon. Thought you were here. Okay, now I will stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Ceremonial matters. We will now have a moment of silence in memory of former mayor and council member Bud Leonard. Thank you. And if anyone would like to say anything, it's not there, but about Bud, where Bud? Feel free to speak up. I know. Bud, Bud was, he was a great guy and he definitely kind of tricked me almost into running. It was a pretty funny story, but I won't bore you. But anyway. Yay, yay, we will miss Bud. He was a really, really, really good gentleman.
Deborah.
Yeah.
I'd like to say. I've known Bud for a long time. When I first started running for city council, he helped me out. And that was over 20 years ago. And during that time, he was always involved in the city. I mean, city council, planning commission, city council, planning commission, and mayor. And, and he was invaluable in helping us whenever we needed anything researched. I mean, he could go in and find anything at the county. And he will be missed. And up until the end, he was listening to all of our meetings. So we'll miss him.
We absolutely will. Thank you Julie.
Mayor Garns, if I might.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes. Bud was instrumental in, in one of the main characters that got me into politics in, in Riedel. He had been on the planning commission until 2010. And then he ran again for city council and was elected. And that created an opening on the planning commission. And that was my first appointment to city government. And then Bud was unable, a couple of years later, to continue on as a council member. That created an opening for which I applied and, and was chosen. And since then, I've been elected, appointed, elected to the council. But Bud was, Bud was right there at the start of my political career. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Hi Deborah, it's Nick Angeloff. Can you hear me?
Yes, Nick, go ahead.
All right, I gotta say something about Bud. Bud was one of the most interesting people I've ever met. Got me into the planning commission as well. But his stories and background of South Pacific, Indonesia, and his work prior to coming to Riedel. The man was no doubt a true patriot and one of the folks that I most respect and had some of the best stories I've ever heard in my life. I'm sorry to hear that he's gone. I'll miss him dearly.
Thank you Nick. Okay, hearing no one else, I will move to public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with council or staff is not intended or allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs unless a finding is made by at least two thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Are there any hands raised or emails? To be read?
Currently, there are no hands raised.
Thank you.
No emails received.
Thank you. And we will move to the consent calendar. Is there anyone from the council who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Hearing none. Is there any pub member of the public who has made known that they wish to remove something from the consent calendar? No hands raised, no emails.
Currently, no hands.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved by Johnson.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second by Woodall.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garns?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Staff, city manager and staff updates, page sixteen. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garns and members of the council. I want to bring to special attention the council and members of the public viewing meeting this evening. Back on January twenty-sixth, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors held a budget session where they reviewed the finances for Measure Z. They did find that there were some additional funds available for appropriations. And special thanks goes out to Supervisor Michelle Bushnell for advocating for Riedel's allocation, the request that was made almost a year ago for Measure Z funds for the current cycle that goes through June thirtieth. So that's about thirty-three thousand dollars in grant funding to the police department to fund personnel activities. So we really want to thank the Board of Supervisors for that, in particular Supervisor Bushnell.
Here, here.
The staff has been working on our paid project, which is scheduled tonight. We have also conducted the first meeting for the Economic Development ad hoc with Scott Gare from Go Humboldt and Herb Baxter from L.A. It was a very productive session that began to happen along with members of the staff. With that, there is one other thing I do want to bring special attention to, to the, to the council, which was, you know, the severe rain events that we did have last week. We did have a sanitary sewer overflow. And so I'm gonna call on Derek Taylor to just provide an update to the council on that particular situation.
Mayor Garns and members of the council. On January twenty-sixth and on twenty-seventh, associated with the same rainstorm, we had two individual events that produced a sanitary sewer overflow at the end of Painter there, our north trunk line choke point, so to speak. We had about thirty thousand gallons lost, but we were able to recover about seven to eight thousand gallons over some late nights and, and some quick responding by the operations staff and the utility crew. Wanted to give them a big thank you. They were out late cleaning up stuff, standing in the rain and cold. So I really appreciate their help. That was pretty much the, the first sanitary sewer overflow. These last rains over the last Sunday and Monday that just passed were a little more steady, but did produce quite a bit of rain. We were kind of close, but the system did hold. And I just wanted to, to let you guys know that with all the extended work of the sewer lateral program that we're doing to make sure that everybody's personal ladder or private laterals are intact and holding water, keeping water out. We've seen a substantial improvement, I would say. Those rain events typically will see about two and a half million gallons of flow through the plant. And subsequently, we've saw about one point five to one point six. So we've seen a pretty substantial decrease in the INI inflow to the plant. And we were able to kind of hold on and not spill as much as we had in the past over these last couple of storms. So I just kind of wanted to give you guys an update on that whole situation. And I can answer any question.
Thank you Derek. Thank you for the update. And thank you Public Works for everything you did to keep that situation as under control as it was possible. Are there any questions for staff? Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garns. Yes, Derek, I've got a question regarding the line from Painter Street to the plant. When was, do you know the last time that we ran a camera through it and subsequently did cleaning? I mean, the, the point is, is it, is it in the best shape that we can get it in? So that we don't have it as a problem, other than it just can't handle the high flows?
So re, as, I would say when I first started here in 2019, it's either that summer or the previous summer of 2020. We did camera the entire length from the plant to Painter Street where it kind of goes back towards the, the collection system. The, the, that choke point where it makes a ninety and then heads out through some pretty flat pipe through the field where we're having the issue. The pipe itself is intact. It's, it's an older AC line and it is, you know, it, it looks good for, for the most part. There's no, no visible damage from any of our sewer cambering or anything like that. The unfortunate part about that line is the section between Walnut and Davis and the plant, just outside of the plant at the berm. It's a little bit of a flatter pipe. And we did notice that there could be a potential belly in the line right there and a potential for, you know, some sediment kind of building up at the bottom. We have jetted it recently as of last summer, but our equipment is a little, is not quite suited for that size of a pipe. It's a twelve inch main. Me and Kyle have been talking earlier this week and we're gonna get some outside help to really, you know, take a look at it and see if we can give it a really good cleaning and see if, you know, kind of what happens after, after that. Just to kind of observe and see if there's anything in the pipe that could be potentially causing a restriction. But as of now, we do know from some preliminary GHD reports that unfortunately, there's a section in there that is, it's just very, very low slope. It's almost a flat pipe. I mean, it's like a point zero seven eight percent slope. So it is a choke point and it's, it really doesn't, you know, these heavy rainstorms exceed its capacity and just cause the sewer to back up.
Was there any comments from the Water Quality Control Board?
Yeah, I mean, I have to, I had to report to Cal OES within two hours of being notified of a spill. So I, I called Cal OES and then I talked to our resource, our state board regulator, Traceline Goodwin, and kind of gave her, you know, a breakdown of, of the event and kind of what happened. And she, and really because of the situation we're in with the TSO and the, or the time scheduled order and the sanitary sewer evaluation, it is a known problem area. So really, I hate to say it like this, but really what we're doing is just really trying to mitigate damages. Because, you know, unfortunately with this humble weather, it's not a matter of if, it's just a matter of when that, you know, this type of situation goes on until we can really find some and target some problematic spots in the collection system and really reduce the, the rain in the system.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're muted Deborah.
Thank you Frank. Councilmember Carter, do you have any questions?
No questions right now. I think, I think Derek answered them. I do want to say thank you though to Derek and the rest of your staff. I know that some of those heavy rains mean you guys are out in the middle of the night in bad weather and that's, that's not ideal. So just thanks for the work you do for our city.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, that's just one, probably back to Derek. On this lateral study, I mean, I see there's quite a write-up in our staff notes. Is this, is this some form of grant that can go towards the city laterals? In, I mean, they've been there a long time before, before the city was a city. So that's, I think we're pushing sixty-five years as a city. They're obviously pretty, Warren, I know we have the ones for when you sell a house, you have to be the, the homeowner brings his up to speed and does a test, which seems like a good idea. And I see several people done it. I've done it myself. But when we dug the pipes up, the city pipes were, they were the old clay terracotta type pipes that were between the city, between the house and the actual sewer. So is, my question, I guess, is, is that grant funding possible to help the city with its laterals?
I think you were referring to the SB two funds that we're gonna be discussing a little bit later. And I think that those are gonna be more for a study for different mixed-use housing, planning and stuff like that. I'm not super familiar with that, but yes, the point of sale and sewer lateral testing for individual houses is, has been a very beneficial program. The terracotta pipe, we do have quite a bit of, of the city mains themselves, some of our smaller stuff, like four and six inch mains that are scattered about, you know, the system. We're identifying those problems and bringing them to the attention of GHD so that they can come up with some, you know, so we can collectively come up with some solutions and hopefully seek some grant funding and, or secondary funding to kind of pinpoint those, those, those problematic areas and, and come up with some solutions to really, you know, tighten things up a little bit. And I think that would be a huge benefit once we, you know, enter that part, that part of the whole grant program and, and once they get their reports written up and once we can identify these problematic areas.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that. So it's still more of a wait and see plus we talk later tonight. But we're still, we're still kind of on a verge of an unknown, on some unknown stuff at this point. Is, is that my understanding correct?
Yeah, I actually, on a side note, I actually met, met with an engineering firm out of Oakland who's coming up on this Thursday and Friday to, to put some monitoring equipment in the, in the collection system to kind of watch how the rain and, and, and weather events affect different sections of town so that, again, they can kind of isolate and make more targeted assessments on where we need the most help. But yes, it is a wait and see. We're, we're, we're doing all the paperwork and we're getting all of our ducks in a row so that we can make the most out of our money.
Didn't we do some of this water inflow sometime back? I think it was before your time. But didn't we do a study where we monitored the amount of water flows in different parts of the town?
I'm not sure.
City Manager, you have anything?
No, we've never done a comprehensive analysis of the overall collection system. We've done some spot smoke testing in various locations. But that's, you know, different from a full sanitary sewer evaluation study.
Thank you for that clarification. I think that's all I have at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions. I, I'm happy to note that there's only two calls at three fifty-five center and I hope everyone else noticed that. You know, I'm happy about it. So then we will move on to special call items. Receive and report. Provide direction and provide direction to staff on SB two planning grants. City Manager, page twenty-one in your packets. Oh, Kyle, can I, just one moment? Was there any, were there, were there any hands raised or emails sent in to make comment on staff reports?
There were no hands raised.
Okay.
No.
Thank you. Kyle, thanks Kyle. Sorry about that.
Go ahead and turn it over to Community Development Director Kevin Caldwell.
Hi Kevin.
Good evening, Mayor Garns, members of the council. As the mayor indicated, this project or discussion starts on page twenty-one of your packet. And the previous discussion was actually a good segue into this SB two planning grant. As the council may remember, back in, I believe it was December of 2019, we made an application for a hundred and sixty thousand dollar planning and technical assistance study to basically study the INI problem out in the Bellevue, Ogil neighborhood. That neighborhood is an older neighborhood and is likely the source of, of the city's INI or at least probably a good portion of it. We made that application prior to knowing that our SSES, sanitary sewer evaluation study grant was approved. So we're somewhat doubling down on that, just in case we were not aware of that SSES study. We were in fact awarded that SSES study, which we briefly just talked about. The SB two planning grant, since we were awarded that study, is actually duplicative of the SSES study. That's why we at the January nineteenth meeting, which we did not present this, but your staff report included the information, suggested that those funds might be used for, for other studies. We talked this over with Department of Housing and Community Development. Told them the background that we were in fact already conducting the SSES study. And through our discussions with them, we talked about the possibility of using those funds, which is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, for other studies that may facilitate additional housing opportunities. And one of the, the projects or studies we talked about was the possibility of preparing construction drawings and civil drawings, basically for a shovel-ready mixed-use project. In the words of HCD staff, they thought that was a game changer for Riedel and was very encouraging. It was noted, a little bit of discussion regarding our requirement that when a property sells, that the property owner is obligated to test their sewer laterals. It should be noted that back in the Ogil Bellevue neighborhood, since that requirement was implemented, there have been eighteen tests out in that neighborhood, which represents about eleven percent of it. There's roughly a hundred and sixty properties out there. Of those eighteen laterals that were tested, seven or about eighty, or about thirty-eight percent had to be replaced or repaired. So we are slowly chipping away at the problem. Again, the big issue here is this SB two grant as currently awarded is duplicative of the SSES grant that the city's been actively working on. Again, HCD was very supportive of the concept. We identified four properties in the city that might be ideal locations to consider a mixed-use development, which would include, of course, housing and an economic, economic development, which of course is one of the council's highest priorities. Those four properties are identified on a map on page twenty-three of your packet. Property number one is the Baptist Church at the corner of Wildwood Avenue and Bellevue Avenue. Property number two is the former Albin property, which is currently owned by the owner of Hobie's Market. Property number three is the Riedel Mobile Home Park. And then property number four, of course, is the Todd property at the intersection of Highway one oh one and Davis Street. What that proposes, should your council decide to redirect or encourage us to look into these possibilities, is to reach out to these property owners to see if they would have any objection to us possibly preparing shovel-ready plans for a mixed-use development at those properties. Once we would hear back from those properties, our intent is to, to bring the results of our outreach to your council and get direction on which one of the four you would think would be the most appropriate to explore this mixed-use development. Again, HCD thought this could be a game changer for the city. We too believe this, this is right in line with the city council's highest or one of the highest priorities to not only encourage economic development, but to facilitate economic development. Again, these would be shovel-ready plans that the city could market. Basically, you come in, you get the plans and you get your permit. There is no discretionary view and it takes all, all the guesswork out of it for the developer. So with that, I would certainly try to answer any questions the council may have, any questions the public may have, or if the city manager would like to add any additional information. I would encourage that as well.
Thank you Kevin. Kyle, did you want to add anything before I?
You know, I think Kevin did a great job of covering the, of covering the, the staff report. And, and again, with, with the SSES, you know, we're really looking at a lot of different, you know, solutions in that regard. You know, for example, Councilmember Wilson brought up the clay piping, which naturally moves water into the groundwater, into the, into the pipe system. And so there are some creative solutions, slip lining of those particular lines that, you know, could be quite effective, in particular, being able to leverage grant funding to cover the cost of, of those types of projects. So, so I think in that regard, we're showing the state that, that we're making progress on the, on that particular issue and we're mediating it. That's, you know, the job number one at this point. And it's gonna, I think, lead towards us being able to pull down grant dollars for, for that particular project. The, the SB two grant as it exists today really just provides a, a study and information. It doesn't provide any assistance to homeowners in the area who have failed laterals and private property. And so this seems more in line with this seems more in line with the overall housing, uh, situation statewide. Uh, and again, meeting the, the, uh, the goals of the city council. Um, so with that, I'll, I'll go ahead and return it to the council.
Thank you. Um, um, well, I can say I'm very excited about it. I think it's a really good idea, but I will put this out to council, uh, council member Wilson.
Yeah, the one, one question I have on this study, will it, so will it distinguish between private and, um, and city property with the, in that study for the, if I understood Kevin correctly, it's, it's, we're, they're putting together drawings for the, for the one on the four, the four major properties, but does this study cover all of the properties besides those four?
No, it would just cover the, the, the turnkey drawings basically, um, would only cover the one property that your council would ultimately decide um, would be the recipient of those plans. And we're going to talk a little bit, uh, about, uh, about the, um, additional funding that's available through the LEAP program to supplement the SB two. Um, I hope that answers your question. Uh, as far as identifying sewer lines, whether they're the city sewer lines or private sewer laterals, um, that's exactly what the SSES study is doing.
So, so is that one that we're applying for or we're already available for?
That, if, if I may, that, that's one that we're already working on right now.
That, that's what GHD, that's what we're doing with GHD.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. So that's defining whose, whose sewer is whose sewer. And, uh, so at the end of that study, we should have a pretty good idea where the responsibilities lie.
That's my understanding.
That's what I thought too, but I wasn't, I wasn't sure. And then this one with the four properties and that's to pick one of those four to have some shovel-ready plans.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's exactly the idea behind it is that, uh, a developer, we'd be able to market these plans to a developer that have already gone through the plan check process, already gone through the environmental review process and are basically, you pick up over the counter and you're good to go.
Uh, does that have any relationship? We got, we had a couple of things in our box here, uh, this week. One, one was relating to the, going across the Baptist property on a pipe. Is this, is this, that a whole separate matter? And one was on Dr. Roberts' property? Are these separate?
Those are actually, yeah, um, uh, through, through the mayor, if I may, those are actually separate projects that have to do with drainage itself.
Okay, so that's not sewer, that's drainage.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, col- are you done, um, um, council member Wilson?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Council member Woodall?
Yes, I have a question. Um, so these plans that would be ready, have other cities utilized this program? And I'm trying to understand, so when the, the owner goes to, let's say the Baptist church, for instance, goes to sell the property, they use that to, to, um, promote their property?
Yeah, those plans would have been, yes, you are absolutely correct. They would be available to the owner to market the property.
Okay.
And the idea is, the, the idea is to get a developer in here that would actually build that mixed-use, that residential commercial type project on that property. And it's a huge advantage to the developer.
Okay, but let's say they're just going to, it doesn't mean they have to sell it that way, does it? If we do the plans for them, they can still sell it any way they want.
Absolutely.
Okay, so do other people have success using this program? Or are we going, I mean, I'd like to know what the success rate is. I'm wondering if a lot of people do this or if we're going to put this study money into it. I mean, it's like two hundred, what, and twenty-five thousand dollars into it? And, well, with the LEAP program. And, um, if, if the, if the property we decide to choose decides not to do it, then we've lost the money that we've put into the study. Am I right or wrong?
You are correct. It does not obligate any property owner to follow through with these plans that are prepared.
Okay, and, and you know?
As far as other, yeah, as far as other jurisdictions, I'm sure that other jurisdictions, other jurisdictions have, um, developed shovel-ready projects, plans. Um, but I don't know what the success is and I don't know exactly which ones, which agencies or jurisdictions have done that. I could certainly reach out to HCD tomorrow and find out, um, if in fact they're aware of any that have been done and in fact have been built.
Well, I, I would like that information because it's a lot of money to put into a piece of property if we don't know. Uh, well, I mean, I would just like to hear. I, for my information, I'd like to know that information. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Um, Kevin, if, if we look at the, uh, map on page twenty-three and, and in particular, uh, the piece of property highlighted as number two, which previously had been owned by the Albin family. Um, it looks to me like it'd be a, a great parcel to, uh, get some plans ready. Um, if, if you are envisioning something going in there, what, what would it look like?
You mean as far as the uses?
Well, as far as, you know, what, um, what, what kind of businesses would, would be? I mean, it's, it's a long, narrow strip.
Yes, it is. Um, I, I think you'd have to, you'd have to do, uh, basically, um, multi-story, um, multi-family development. And then of course, some sort of visitor-serving or highway commercial type development due to the, uh, the fantastic highway access and visibility. Um, but that's, that's part of the process, um, should your council decide to do this, is that the way that we have this written and talk about this a little more in, in the, the discussion later regarding the LEAP application, is that the designer, the consultant that's actually selected to do the work would present three conceptual plans for the parcel that's chosen. And then your council of those three would select the one that you think is most appropriate. And then that designer and the civil team would go to work on developing those, those plans, those construction drawings, those civil plans. Um, but I would think that there would be on that parcel for sure, you'd be looking at, at multi-story, um, high-density residential uses. And then hopefully some visitor-serving facilities. And depending on how it's laid out, it would be fantastic to, to get a restaurant up there and maybe a smaller hotel. Um, those are two potential uses of that site that I think could represent the highest and best use of that site, of course, along with the residential uses as well.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protim. Council member, council member Carter?
Thank you. Um, well, the good thing about going last is everybody asked my questions for me already. So, thank you. Um, I, I will say I am on board for this though. It sounds like it would be what's best for the city. So, thanks Kevin for putting all that together.
All right. Um, thank you, uh, council member Carter. Um, and I would just, um, see, I would like to say that I, my understanding is that what the SB two, um, funds are for, um, if we were not to use it for what's just been described and we'd use it for sewer studies, that that would be redundant and it is un, unneeded in that um, capacity. Um, and that, um, I think that if we, we reach out to the property owners and someone is, um, really excited about doing it and having it done, it's, it would kind of, you would, you would tend to believe that they were going to either sell it or develop it them, themselves because, um, there's no other reason to do it. And I believe that it would offer, it would allow, um, a property owner to even ask for a higher asking price because that everything's done. And so a developer, or even if they were to develop it, would not have to go and do all of those steps and pay for all of those steps. Those steps would be already, um, there and waiting for them. And it would just be, um, a much easier, uh, uh, road for whoever was intending to develop it. So that's something I think that, um, you know, we, we need to keep in mind as, as we talk about, uh, talk about this. Um, so are there any, um, hands raised or any email uh, from public?
Apparently there are no hands raised.
Okay, and, and I just want to say that, um, and I know this because my screen keeps going away that uh, Rose is putting up the numbers. She's putting up the information for, uh, people to call in or, or raise, you know, uh, to zoom in or call in, um, while, uh, some of the discussion is happening. So, um, just for anyone who doesn't know that or who's on the phone and not seeing the screen, we aren't just asking it, just to ask it, there's actually the opportunity for, um, uh, citizens to call in or email in. So, um, let's see. Now, as far as action, city manager, what is, what is, what is it that you are hoping? What do you want us to tell you? Whether we want to move forward with, uh, sending out letters?
Correct. So if the, if the council, um, uh, would, uh, direct staff to move forward with this, we would, uh, then approach the property owners and, you know, provide them this opportunity uh, and see if anybody's, uh, interested in, in, in this possibility. If I could back up for just one second though. Karen, do we have any emails?
No emails received.
Um, what about from last week, uh, or last meeting?
Oh, good memory.
Thank you for reminding me. I can read that.
Good memory.
Okay, so, um, the question regarding SB planning grant, residents of the Bellevue Oval neighborhood have been coming to Riedel City Council meetings for many years, now asking for help with the drainage and sewer issues in that area. The hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant to conduct a sewer lateral study in the area was obviously thought to be a high priority need identified by the city back when the grant application was developed. The staff report for this item says, one of the concerns in accepting the grant and implementing the study is that we believe there is a significant number of properties that have failing laterals and as such, these property owners could be responsible for replacing the laterals. The average cost for a lateral replacement is five thousand dollars, about five thousand dollars. This is likely a burden that most of the property owners cannot afford. So what is the city's plan for addressing the significant number of properties that the city believes have failing laterals if the city decides to divert this grant money from the original study? Have the property owners who reside in the original sewer lateral study area been consulted? And could the city pursue any options or grants for helping property owners make the necessary repairs rather than just leave them with failing sewer lines? Thank you, Sharon and Steve Wolf.
Um, so if I could, uh, uh, jump in there and just try to answer, oh, that's the, um, you know, INI issue, as we've discussed, is a very high priority of the, of the city. Um, and so that's why we have secured roughly a half million dollars in grants to do the overall study of the system. There are a lot of mysteries associated with, with the system. It'll be the first time really that a comprehensive study has been done on the collection system. A lot of which is composed of, of legacy infrastructure established prior to the incorporation of the city. Um, so there's significant, um, uh, you know, issues with the sanitary sewer system uh, just by design. Um, for example, the clay pipe that was mentioned, uh, the physical limitations of some of the final connections to the sewer plan itself uh, are limited. All of that has to really be looked at holistically. While we believe that there are issues in uh, the Bellevue Oval neighborhood with privately owned sewer laterals, it is not exclusively an issue, uh, for the Bellevue Oval neighborhood. Um, it's an issue that exists all throughout town, particularly with older building stock. And so the city has one of the more aggressive policies for the sewer lateral inspections uh, at the time of sale that Kevin briefly mentioned. And in this particular neighborhood, there have been uh, some repairs done to that section. And as Derek Taylor mentioned earlier, the rain event from last week, um, produced less INI than we would have, uh, normally seen in that, uh, particular event. So progress is being made on that. Um, but, uh, we think there's a lot more to do, uh, particularly on city-owned infrastructure. Um, that is exclusively the responsibility of, of the city to take care of. Uh, and so again, uh, by identifying some of the areas that we could do uh, repairs like slip lining and, and issues like that, um, our hope is that we can, uh, really reduce the INI situation without uh, taking further steps beyond the, uh, the sewer lateral uh, inspection policy. So, um, so this is in the best interests of, of both the ratepayers, the individual property owners. Uh, and, uh, and again, the game changer for this, um, was for us, for SB two was in talking with the state and finding out that, uh, we could include mixed-use, uh, development, um, pre-permitting in this. So including, you know, commercial activities uh, in, in conjunction with housing. And that was, uh, really important because it, uh, it helps, uh, push forward, uh, economic development in the community. Uh, and, and fits what really the state ultimately wants the SB two dollars to go towards, which is increased housing. And so sewer lateral inspections, while it's an allowable use, it's hard to see how that ultimately leads to more development out of Bellevue Oval. Uh, when that neighborhood is mostly, uh, built out. There's only a few properties out there that, uh, that are, uh, suitable for new development.
Okay, um, I hope that answered the question. Um, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not sure. I mean, I don't know if the question was about whether or not the city could use those funds for residents, individual residents. That's kind of my sense of what that question was, but, and I don't have that answer, but, um, do you have that answer? Yes.
The SB two funds cannot be used for individual property in order to make improvements, um, to their laterals. I think the question really resolved about, um, the concerns that neighbors have expressed over the years regarding INI and flooding. Um, they are related, but again, the INI study is actually being conducted as part of the ES S, uh, environmental sanitary sewer evaluation study, ESSS study. So it is getting done. Um, as the city manager indicated earlier, that SSES money um, is actually, that study will actually leverage us or put the city in a better position, um, to get grant funding, um, to help, potentially help all those property owners out there, um, with some funding to help repair those, those laterals that are in fact identified as INI problems. So I think that's the answer to the question there.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Um, both Kyle and Kevin, thank you both for answering that and clearing that up. Uh, so, um, do you need, there isn't, uh, a, a call for a vote or a motion? Is there a consensus that you need, um, city manager? How do you, how do you want me to hand?
I would hand it over to Kevin. So Kevin, what, what direction do you want from the council in the form of a motion?
I, I would actually suggest a motion of the council directing staff to reach out uh, to these property owners regarding the use of these SB two funds for turnkey shovel-ready plans, pre-permitted plans.
Okay, is there a motion to reach out to the property owners to use the SB two funds to create shovel-ready plans? to use the SB2 funds to create shovel-ready plans? Is that, was that, was that basically what you said? Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move by Johnson.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second by Carter.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and a question by Councilmember Wilson.
When we're doing these, I guess these pre-approved plans, is that contributing to a private individual's property? Is that what you just mentioned earlier, that we couldn't do that? Isn't that what we're doing when we take somebody's property and we put money into a development plan so they can sell it? Is that, seems like, it seems like that is benefiting from that.
Yeah, it actually benefits the community as a whole, and I think that's what HCD was trying to impress upon us when they used the term "game changer." If we could use those funds to facilitate additional housing opportunities, that is consistent with the SB2 funds. At no time did the state raise an issue that this could be considered a gift to public funds. I am under the impression, and I understand that these types of pre-approved plans have been used throughout a number of jurisdictions up and down the state. So I don't believe that's an issue at all. But we will certainly reach out to the state, to HCD, and make sure that in fact, it is not an issue.
Because I, I think it's a great idea to get, you know, if we get something moving that actually attracts developers, or at least housing, as well as maybe some kind of commercial use. I just don't want us to get tangled in something that we end up regretting later. So, if you want to, if you check that out, that would probably clarify whatever we need to get.
Absolutely, I will report back to your council.
And, and also, this, what we are doing in this moment with the motion and the second is not, we're not making a commitment to anything other than reaching out and saying, "Are you open to this idea?" And we aren't saying we're going to do it, we are, we're not telling, I should say, a particular property owner that we're going to do this in, you know, two months or in a year. We're saying, "Are you open to this idea?" That's what this particular motion is, I believe, is that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So are there any other discussions, any other questions? Hearing none, is there any questions, hand raised? I think we've already done the hand raising and the email questions, and we've had that. So can we have a roll call, please?
It's the member Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes, so the motion carries 5-0 to reach out to property owners to ask the question. We'll move on now to financial contributions to Chamber of Commerce for holiday decorations, page 25. City Manager, City Clerk?
So go ahead and turn this over to Cheryl, if she's still on the line.
I am still on the line, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. So basically, we received a request for financial contribution for Christmas lights from the chamber. I would like to say, I thought that Rio Del looked especially festive this holiday season, and thank you very much. But when we went to process it, we realized we don't have an agreement, and we didn't have specific guidance or approval from the council to reimburse the chamber. So the current budget has sufficient funds allocated, but there was no specific direction regarding funding the chamber for the current fiscal year. So that's what we're looking for, thank you.
Thank you. Are there, I'm gonna just pull the council, Councilmember Woodall? Do you have any questions, comments?
No, I just think that in the future, we need to make sure this is done beforehand, and take a look at it when we're doing our budgeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
I agree with Julie.
Councilmember Wilson?
I agree there too, except I thought we, maybe we overlooked it, but I thought we authorized money at one time for lights. Sometime back, didn't we authorize something for the?
That was a couple of years back.
Yeah, so these are, these are ones that have come on, we've just been adding them each year, and we hadn't regone back and addressed those.
That's what it appears, that's how I see what we're looking at. Is that about right, City Manager?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Oh no, I'm sorry Frank, I was just trying to get someone to clarify for you.
I can clarify, so we had received previous approval from the council last fiscal year. All of the funds from that year were not fully expended, and it was an oversight to not have it, so the funds are in a line item called promotional, but they're not specifically earmarked for what that promotional purpose is. So when we do the budget for next fiscal year, we'll make a point of, like, putting in the notes that this is for the chamber, if that is what your council would like to be done.
Okay, so it sounds like it's, it's a done, it's an after-the-fact housekeeping that we need to take forward, fix going forward, so we don't do this again. Is that, is that correct?
I think that's correct, I think so.
I believe so, and I know Nick is also...
I'm sorry.
I don't know, I think we might have lost Cheryl, where she went out on us.
Nick is on the line if you guys wanted to hear from me.
Okay, hang on Nick.
Up to you, I heard my name, so.
Yeah, for sure, hang on for a sec. Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim, I'm sorry Frank, were you done?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. I certainly agree with all the other council members that I think it'd be really appropriate for the council to make sure that the chamber, at the time of budget preparation, assures that there will be a line item for their consideration in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And, yeah, I have, I have some questions, I guess, or I don't really have a question. I have some issue with, I know that we, I love the Christmas lights, and they were absolutely beautiful, but I don't know that this is a city function. And so, you know, the first year we were asked for something, we donated, and then the next year, we donated, but it was a higher number, and then last, the year before, there was a light pole that we were to cover, and so it just seems like every year it gets more, and what, it's my, my understanding is that it's either the chamber's deal, or it's the city's deal, and it's the chamber's deal. So what I, I guess what I'm trying to sort is, you know, we as a city are a member of the Chamber of Commerce, so we as a city then should donate the exact same amount as every other business in the city, because the Chamber of Commerce is, its function is the businesses of the city, not the city, you know, banking, bankrolling the activity. And that probably sounds Scrooge-like, and I don't mean it to, I just, I just mean it to, you know, it just seems like every year it gets more and more, and the city, every, we've said yes, and it's kind of like, we're almost, it's just, it's almost like we're just kind of used to saying yes, and so we just say yes, and we just, and it's a little more, and we say okay. And, and, you know, if that's what the majority wants, that's all good. But I just wanted to put that out there so that we think about, we are not the chamber, we are not the chamber's, you know, fund source, we are a member of the Chamber of Commerce. And so, and from my perspective, if we're, if we're basically giving the city, the Chamber of Commerce $2,500, then every business in Rio Del should give them $2,500, or we should all, as all the business members, in combination, give them $2,500. But I don't really understand why the city is, is having to every year do this, and, or even why we're being asked to do this. And with that, I will turn it over to you now, Nick.
All right, we do ask every business for donations, our membership, and we do receive some large donations and some smaller donations. It's all about how much people can afford. I mean, folks throw into the little box when we have our Christmas tree lighting ceremony, a couple of bucks, kids put in a couple of pennies. Whatever happens is fantastic. We appreciate anything that the city or any other member can donate to keep this thing going. We put a lot out for the city in general, now the various projects throughout the year, and we really appreciate the contributions of the city. I see this as a collaborative effort to, particularly this year, bring a little bit of joy to the city during the holiday season, and that's where we're at with it. What else we got coming up? Kiosk, you guys will see it on your agenda. And we're not asking for anything for that one, we're just looking for placement, an approval of placements for the kiosk that should be put up pretty quick here, within the next couple of months. The, what else? You know, I'm blanking on some of the stuff that we've garnered, you know, lots and lots of donations this year. So it's been wonderful, the community has been very supportive for all the projects that we've been doing. So it's not just the city, so the businesses are contributing as well. And myself.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick. Are there any public comments, or hand raises, or raised, or emails?
There are currently no hands raised.
No emails received.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion to approve the contribution of $2,500 for the chamber for the holiday decorations?
I will move that.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second by Johnson.
Okay, thank you. There is a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, and then I'd like to make a comment after, maybe we're done with the roll call.
Okay, Councilmember Woodall?
Abstain.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes. Motion carries four, and with one abstention. Councilmember Wilson?
My comment is, is this is, it's just, it's been a screw year. And I don't, I don't know, you know, like Nick said, there's other people have made donations. I'm not even sure what businesses are functioning at this point sometimes in Rio Del. I know that the few that are left have struggled, and I'm glad that the city had, we weren't impacted as bad as other cities were on the financial side. In a case like this, I think it's something that our city needs to, and which we did, step up and do this. Going forward, we certainly need to learn from the experience and set some, some things in place for a future budget. But in light of all that's gone on through this last year, I'm glad the city was able to be able to do something and put some positive into the, into the, into the community.
Thank you. Thank you, and I fully support exactly what you said, Councilmember Wilson. I just think it needs to definitely be on our minds in the future when we're doing budget and we're thinking about what's coming up. And, you know, hopefully President Angeloff will be at our budget meetings, and, you know, we'll have conversations then. But still, thank you everyone for that.
And thank you guys very much.
You're welcome, Nick. So now we will have an update on the 2021 Street Projects, page 36, City Manager.
All right, thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. I'm going to try to do a screen share here, so give me just a minute. Hopefully that pops up on the screen.
I can see it.
Okay. So the council did meet back on November 17th to do some long-range, five-year planning for street projects. This past year, we did accomplish a fair amount out on, in addition to the ATP project, we were able to do some slurry ceiling projects on Rigby, on Painter. We were able to do some asphalt projects on Eloa and Firm. And so the council has approved a plan listed on page 37 of your packet for kind of the next round. And it's a rough plan, a rough estimate of costs in terms of what we're planning for, but the 2021 year, which is the first numbered column, includes projects in various locations, including the Butcher-Rio Del Avenue area, Dixie, Miller Court, and in Eloa Street as well. So we'll go ahead and just give you the brief overview of the projects as they're looking right now. So this particular map, if you, if you look to the upper right corner, the tennis courts are located in the upper right. And what we're looking at is in the middle of the screen, which is Dixie Street. So Dixie is in the avenues, and it's a little bit hard to see, but the white cutouts are the proposed overlay locations for Dixie, along with grindouts, we would be doing replacement of the valve boxes and drainage inlets, as well as a couple manholes on this particular street. So this is one of our project areas for this coming summer. The next project area down here, if you notice, this is Highway 101 on the lower portion of your screen, and the Journey Church is on the left-hand corner of the screen. And so this is the River Ogul Spring Loop. This section, all of the sections are chosen, by the way, the council asked us to prioritize areas where we didn't have known projects that would, where we would have to go in and rip up the street. So most of the underground infrastructure in these locations isn't good, is in good condition along with on Dixie. So they're ready to be paved, and we don't anticipate that they would need to be, you know, immediately dug up for any major project. So the portion that I do want to bring up and just make really clear on Ogul, Randy and I have been out there and have looked at various options of how to approach... Randy and I have been out there and have looked at various options of how to approach, um, uh, the Ogle pave project. And so this, uh, particular strip, uh, through Ogle from between River and Spring, uh, we would be paving the travel lanes in the center. Now, there are, uh, you know, pretty significant issues in terms of, um, the closer you get to the private property boundary, um, there are just, you know, problems that I, you know, uh, when we pave, we may create, uh, additional problems. So we're focusing really on the two 10-foot travel lanes in the center of the road. So for a total of, uh, 20 feet in the center, that's consistent with some of the other, uh, pavings in the avenues and then also up on the other side of, of Ogle Avenue, um, where really the travel lanes are what are focused on. Um, this project would also include seeking a new, uh, manhole all the way down to the, uh, uh, down to the sanitary sewer collection system, uh, as well as, uh, you know, valve box repairs, um, and, uh, uh, sewer, uh, elevations. This project, you can't, uh, it's hard to see, but in the, on the right side on Spring would also include a slight drainage improvement, a new DI placed on, um, on the, uh, church side of Spring, uh, that links to some of our new drainage inlets that, uh, across the, uh, the road here, uh, just to make sure that we're not creating drainage problems that then we have to go back and, and solve later. Um, this next project site location, you'll see, uh, 101, across the top of your screen and CC Market on the right-hand side. So this is Aloha. Uh, this left, far left portion of your screen is where our ATP project, uh, recently terminated. Uh, and this area has been, uh, modified. Um, so this is, uh, one we were hoping we could get away with the slurry seal on. However, it, you know, further close inspection of the road system, there are some pretty significant problems, particularly closer you get to CC Market. Um, there's a lot of drainage overflow on the road, which is part of the reason why it's in bad condition. Uh, so every time it rains, just water is sheeting over the, the top. Um, so there would need to be a little bit more focus on the drainage in this particular area for grindouts and reconfiguration of the, uh, property or the, excuse me, the transitions, uh, to allow drainage uh, in this. Um, there would also, uh, be some gravel reconfiguration, um, uh, on the adjacent, uh, areas. So the yellow portions are just simply regrading, um, potentially adding some gravel, um, to, uh, to smooth it out. And that includes up in this, uh, on the other side of, uh, on the west side of, uh, of Aloha Street. So we are working through some problems with, uh, the surveyor that have been identified. We're going to need to work with the property owners in this particular area, um, to, uh, to, uh, get certain permissions to do projects, but I don't see why that, uh, would not move forward at this particular time. We are looking also at grading out a portion of the, the ditch here, uh, and moving the, the street a little bit to the, uh, uh, to the west by about two feet, just to create a little bit more room here. The road width as it stands right now is very, very highly variable. It's, it's, um, uh, thin and thick in various, uh, sections. And so, uh, smoothing that out, I think will create a little bit of a safer corridor without, uh, while still being in the city right of way. Um, so just a minor improvement in that particular location. So this is all, again, the white is all an overlay. Uh, there would be additional, uh, grindouts and reconfiguration of the roadway. Or at least, at least one DI that needs to be fully replaced. And then there's some pavement edging here that needs to be corrective, uh, to get this area to drain properly so that this pavement, when it goes in, stays for a longer period of time. Um, so again, this map is on page, this particular location is on page forty of your packet. Um, if you, uh, if you want to look at it a little bit closer. And the next map, which is on page forty-one, um, shows the Ria Del Avenue, or excuse me, this is Wildwood Avenue is on the, um, bottom portion of the screen. And so the fire hall is just to the left here, just off of the satellite view. And, uh, spanning from left to right is Ria Del Avenue, uh, which has, uh, variable pavement conditions, uh, in the center. It's, uh, in good condition. And then it needs replacement in these various locations that are highlighted in white. So this is, again, a pretty simple overlay with, uh, you know, valve boxes. Um, one of the issues that has popped up here is, you know, just making sure that we're doing, uh, making sure that we're maximizing the drainage potential in this area to get water off the roads. Um, a lot of these roads have failed and are in the condition that they're in simply because there's no, uh, drainage off of these road sites. And so we have talked to the, uh, property owners here who are amenable, um, to, uh, these, uh, these solutions and are actually excited about the, uh, prospect of solving these, uh, these drainage issues. Uh, and, uh, so we'll be working with them to, uh, secure our easements, uh, for the project, uh, and then moving it, moving it forward. The next one is Miller Court. That was also identified on page forty-two. Um, this one is, uh, you know, a failed, um, when this, uh, uh, housing development went in, uh, there just wasn't good drainage, uh, in this particular loop. And the road has, has failed and, and it's getting worse, uh, pretty exponentially. So we want to get in there and try to correct it and allow the water to drain appropriately across the road. Uh, you know, water seems to be the common theme with most of the failed, uh, pavement areas, uh, in the city. So in addition to this, there's, uh, uh, probably another, uh, 200 square yards of various grindouts and patches in different locations, um, in, in town, um, in preparation for slurry seals. Uh, and then we would also be putting, um, a few tons of, uh, of asphalt up on, um, on Bellevue Road to, uh, to correct some of the deficiencies, uh, on that particular road. Um, so we're hoping to, uh, get the bid out before the end of the month, hopefully by mid-month, and then, um, uh, and then have results, um, uh, early in, uh, I hope preferably by mid, um, by mid-March, uh, for the council to approve a project. Um, so this is just an opportunity to update the council for, uh, those projects from back on, uh, fifth of November 17th. Um, answer any questions that the council may have, and then, uh, just see if Randy has anything else to add, uh, to, uh, that I may have missed, uh, from the, uh, discussion.
I'm just waiting to see if Randy jumps in.
Okay, uh, Mayor and Council. So overall, throughout this whole process, there is, we know as, um, quite a bit of drainage problems and whatnot. But, uh, what we're thinking of in the most part of this is to basically smooth out the travel lanes, uh, do some aggregate base on the edges to kind of take care of the potholes and, uh, kind of like, sort of contour the, uh, slopes back to the current drains that are there. Um, there's still going to need to be work for drainage down the road, but this is like, say, just an asphalt repair for the travel lanes, to smooth the lanes out. Um, and overall, uh, quite a project to do, considering that we haven't done something this big in quite so many years, if ever. Um, I'm just looking forward to, uh, getting the process of getting this, uh, proposed and getting it out the bid and see what we come up with. If you have any questions, uh, available to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Wood, uh, Johnson?
Mr. Mayor Garz, uh, I'd just like to remind the council that, uh, you know, these are going to be vast improvements. Do not confuse yourself with, uh, thinking that they're going to be perfect because, uh, we don't have enough money in the, in the city of Ria Del to make our, our streets perfect. But they're going to be vastly improved. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
Well, I'm just excited that we're going to do it and that people will, once again this year, be able to see that we're working on the roads and there'll be something visual to show for the money we're putting out. And so I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor Garz. Um, no questions, but I also am excited and looking forward to fixing some stuff, getting some stuff done. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, same, the same here that I'm excited we're doing something. And it seems like we're, we're making the best use of what we have for the time being. So.
All right. Thank you. Yay. Thank you, uh, staff for all the work you're putting into it. And, um, hopefully I, I keep getting emails and I keep saying, just wait for it, it's coming. It's only, you know, the first week of February. So it's only, actually the second day of February, happy Groundhog Day. And, um, so I am looking forward to, to what, uh, is going to be accomplished, what's coming up. I appreciate all the staff, uh, work. Are there any raised hands or emails?
Currently, there are no hands raised.
No emails.
Thank you. Then, um, thank you for that update. And now we are moving on to another update, a review of traffic accident reports for 2020. Chief of Police Connor?
Jeff, good evening, Mayor Garz, members of the council.
Hi Jeff.
As the traffic officer, I'm required to give you a briefing on traffic accidents that occurred on a yearly basis. Today's, uh, agenda item is the traffic accidents that occurred in the year 2020. You'll find an attached spreadsheet that lists all 16 of the accidents we had last year that were reported to the Ria Del Police Department. Um, I don't know that there's anything real interesting that you can draw from this data. Uh, fully three-quarters of those accidents were hit and runs, uh, all with, uh, relatively minor property damage. Two of those were DUIs where we managed to actually find the, the driver of the offending vehicle and take them into custody. There's a high likelihood that, uh, most, if not all, of the remaining ones were also caused by drunk drivers. Um, there were two minor injury accidents. Uh, both occurred on Wildwood. One was at the intersection of Wildwood and Monument. Uh, the other was at the intersection of Wildwood and Dixie. One was a car versus a pedestrian. The other was a car versus a bicyclist. Uh, neither person was seriously injured. Uh, neither person went to the hospital. In terms of intersections or areas of highway, uh, that seem to be repeat offenders in the accident list, um, the 500 block of Wildwood between Dixie and, uh, Elko, between the gas station and Darren Gallagher's house, uh, has several accidents. There are some visibility issues. Um, the bicycle accident may have been partially contributed to by, uh, the inability of the cyclist who was riding on the wrong side of Wildwood. He was headed south in the northbound lanes. He tried to turn in front of a vehicle that was turning from Dixie onto Wildwood. Uh, and the driver never saw him until he ran into the side of her car. Um, the other intersection of note is that Monument and Edwards, uh, in addition to the two accidents that happened in this area in this year, there was one there last year that was also an injury accident, was a little more serious than what we've seen this year. There are visibility concerns at that intersection also. However, they do not seem to have, uh, had any, uh, relevant impact on the accidents we saw either this year or last year. One was a garbage truck that sat up quite high and had visibility over the parked cars. And the other one was a pedestrian in it, in the crosswalk that would have been easily visible to the car on Edwards that was trying to turn left onto Wildwood. So if there's any questions about this, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you, Jeff. Mayor Pro Tim, John?
Uh, no questions at this time, Mayor Garz.
You're muted again, Deborah.
You're muted, Deborah.
Councilmember Wilson, uh, Wilson?
Yeah, the, uh, I just, Chief Connor said it is notable that 12 of the 16 were hit and runs. I was counting those earlier. They, they just hit somebody and then drive off? Deal and then somebody, a minute later, is that what happened?
I, I didn't try and, and calculate how many of them hit cars and how many of them hit fixed objects. I'd say the majority are fences, telephone poles, things of, of that ilk. Uh, but there are at least four or five where they hit a parked car. And then they drive off.
There was this morning when I was going to work, there was a guy on a, I've seen him before, he's on a unicycle. It's battery powered or something. First I thought it was a bicycle going down a road and then it stopped there and there's a guy on a.
Uh, I, I know the gentleman of which you speak and, uh, I am, I am awed by his bravery. If I tried to get on that thing, I'd be road rash from one end to the other.
Yeah, it's kind of a scary thing to be out that early in the morning in the rain, riding a unicycle. So, yeah.
All right. Councilmember Woodall?
Nothing. Thank you, Jeff.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Garz, and thank you, Jeff, for the update. Um, my question is about the visibility concerns on Monument and Edwards. Shocker. Um, are any of those caused by the, the person who likes to park where there is no parking spot and blocks the visibility there? Is that what you mean?
No, uh, of the three, well, that, that is the, the angled parking on the, uh, the east side of Wildwood does obstruct vision. If you're coming up Edwards and, and come to the stop sign, you have to slowly ease forward to see traffic coming across the bridge. And a particular problem is the one truck that tends to park at the very north end of that angled parking, not really in the angled parking and more perpendicular than angle. But we've, we've had discussions before. We know who that is. Um, but of the accidents that occurred there, one was a hit and run that occurred in the middle of the night, uh, on the other side of the street where they just backed up into a parked car. So that, that didn't have any play in it. Um, the, the one that I referenced that occurred last year, uh, was a garbage truck that was coming down Monument and was trying to turn onto Wildwood. And there was a car proceeding straight headed south, um, on Wildwood. And the garbage truck ran into the car, causing major damage to the car. And, and the, the driver went to the hospital by ambulance. Um, but the garbage truck driver sits up higher than an average car. And so he could see over the parked cars that were parked on the west side of Monument. And then the, the other injury accident that happened there this year, uh, was a driver turning left from Edwards onto, um, onto Wildwood. And he, she struck a pedestrian in the crosswalk and the, the pedestrian was closer to Grundmann's than she was to Mingos. So while that is a visibility concern, it wasn't in this particular case. I hope that answers your question.
It does. You know, I had to ask. I turned left from Edwards to Monument or to, you know, just whatever, Wildwood, every single day. I can never see. So thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Um, are there any, um, raised hands? I think I covered everyone. Is there, are there any raised hands or, um, emails?
There are no raised hands at the moment. No emails at this time.
Thank you. Then thank you, Jeff, um, for the update. Appreciate it. Now we'll move on to our final item. It was the resolution number 1478-2021, authorizing application for local early action planning LEAP grant to supplement the SB2 grant funds. City Manager, page, uh, forty-five in your packet.
And we'll, uh, hop over to, to Kevin again on this one.
Mayor Garz, members of the council, uh, we, we talked about SB2 a little earlier this evening. We were encouraged again by the state HCD to take advantage of LEAP funds. And LEAP is an acronym for Local Early Action Planning Regarding Housing. And this is a non-competitive grant that. And this is a non-competitive grant that the amount of the grant is actually determined based on your population. Based on our population, the city is eligible for $65,000. Again, the state suggested that we utilize these funds to supplement those SB2 funds in order to get a turnkey shovel-ready, pre-permitted mixed house, mixed-use commercial housing development designed and approved. As such, we recommend that council authorize the city manager through Resolution 1478-2021 to sign the attached resolution and submit it to the state. We did submit the application to the state on January 31st. They did say to follow up with the resolution. And we recommend that council super-sue this fund as the state. Kevin's questions, if there's anything against them. Should be noted that I did prepare a rough draft for our schedule and funding and tasks and milestones or benchmarks to start on page forty-nine of your packet. And it's just to give your council an idea of the task that would be involved in the timeframe to give to those staff that hopefully get in place. Again, if there's any questions, if there's more to ask.
Thank you. Director Caldwell? Are there questions? I will go first to Amanda. Councilmember Carter?
No questions right now, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Woodall?
No questions.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
No questions, Mayor Garance.
Thank you. Are there, and I have no questions. I think it's a good plan, but I have no questions about it. I just think it's a, it's a very good idea to do. Are there any hands raised or emails?
No hands raised at the moment.
No emails.
Thank you. So is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 1478-2020, authorizing application for a LEAP grant to supplement the SB2 grant funds?
Sub moved by Johnson.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second by Woodall.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson? Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes. Motion carries five-zero. Now we will move on to council reports. Council, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Last, a couple of things happened last week on Thursday, I believe. First of all, we, we held a Economic Development Zoom meeting that lasted about two and a half hours. And a city clerk kept a record of it. And I don't know if that's been distributed to all the council members. But there's several highlights that I'd like to speak to. One is that there's an organization called CAL Economic Development or California Economic Development, CAL ED. And it's free for us to join. It's a great resource. And, you know, I think that's one of the, one of the first things that the city should do is, is join that organization. The second is that CAL ED representative pointed out that there's a lot of funds available through the USDA, US Department, United States Department of Agriculture. It's more, it's more than just grain or, or hog feed. There's actual money out there for economic development and lots of grants out there. And we need to be keeping track of those so that we can get our fair share. We covered several matters in depth, but certainly not all of the matters. And I don't know if we will be holding a subsequent meeting, but I think probably we need to hold another meeting or two to, to get to the finish line with a report back to council. Later that afternoon, the mayor's selection committee held a meeting for an appointment to Humboldt-Lafco. And there were two candidates, Mike Lucy, council member from Fortuna, and myself. And the mayor's selection selected council member Lucy from Fortuna. That said, there is going to be another mayor's selection committee next Monday, I believe. And they'll be selecting an alternate for Humboldt-Lafco. And I, I think I might be in the running for that one. So that's all I have to report at this time, Mayor Garance.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
Yes, tomorrow I have an HTA meeting and it's going to be a short meeting. They're going to give us an update on the service between Eureka and Samoa that began on January 4th this year. So they've been running for a short time. And the, the other thing on the agenda is a bus shelter replacement project. Unfortunately, it's not for us. It's just for Fourth Street and Fifth Street in Eureka. Friday, we have an ad hoc committee meeting about the related to public waste bin selection at one o'clock. And also I have a question for Kyle. Kyle, are we going to have another ad hoc committee meeting on the school property issue?
Yeah, we can, we can schedule that. Absolutely.
Okay. Other than that, I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Two things. So first, I completed my new mayor's and council members' training through the ULEA cities. Really helpful. It was a lot like drinking from a fire hose through Zoom. But it, I, I was really helpful and informative. And more than anything, I just wanted to say that it gave me a lot of perspective on how much I learned about the nuts and bolts of this thing, just from sitting in on meetings and, and being involved for the last year or so. And so I just really wanted to give a big old giant thank you to everyone, to members of the city council and city staff also for being such good examples and so supportive of me as I learn what I'm doing. So thank you to everyone there. I guess it was on the 25th of January, I attended the regular meeting of the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission and heard a presentation from Vero Fiber Networks. And that is the company that's laying the broadband fiber from Eureka all the way to Redding. I know that project has been in the works for a little bit. They are on their seventh attempt to finance this project. But they are very confident and very hopeful that this one will stick and we're good to go. So that was really it on that meeting. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, we had, we had RCEA, Ribbon Economic, not Economic, Ribbon Energy Authority. And we mainly just elected a chairperson, which was Sherri Wu and Director Avenson from Ferndale for the assistant chair, kind of getting that nailed down. And then the other one was HWMA meeting. We've got another one of those next week. I think you'll notice one thing too, back from RCEA, your, your electricity bill is going to go up. Your RCA component will go down. But the transmission lines, due to the fact that PGD hadn't fixed their infrastructure and then they burnt a city or two down, they thought they ought to repair that. So the best way to do that would be to raise your rates. So that's what they're going to do, so they could pay for that and their stockholders will benefit as well. That's my cynicism on this. Pretty disgusting. But anyway, that's all I had to report.
Okay, thank you. And I had a coffee chat meeting with CAL Cities Redwood Division on Thursday morning. And it was just kind of meeting some people and members that were new. And I was invited to the California Mayor's Coalition to, to join that. And so basically the action plan is you have, we'll have a monthly call with the governor to increase equity and collaboration between the governor and mayors of smaller cities, because we represent 72% of the population. Allocate, you know, champion allocating new state funding, with the exception of competitive grants, but all the other grants on a per capita basis to all cities. Clear, concise, timely communication with the CMC, which is a mayor's coalition, to regarding COVID spread and issues surrounding that. Safely reopening economic sectors, engaging and empowering us to support the COVID-19 vaccine, public education and state sales tax deferral program and, and things like that. And that's on and on. And then also the CAL Cities, I was appointed by the president of CAL Cities, which is the new name of the League of California Cities. Their new moniker is now CAL Cities. And it is, I was appointed to the Equity Advisory Committee, Advancing Equity Advisory Committee. And we will meet three times. And the purpose is the commitment to create equitable and just, to create an equitable and just future for all Californians. So I will bring you up to speed when our first meeting is on the 24th. And I'll, you know, report out on that. And the meeting of the Mayor's Coalition, that first meeting is this Friday. And I will report out on that after attending those two things. And I think that's pretty much, that's it for me. So yay, this is my favorite part, is there a motion to adjourn?
Sub moved by Johnson.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second? Come on. Okay, I will second. Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. So we will adjourn until February 16th, 6:30. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your participation, anyone who's out there. And we will see you in two weeks. Bye-bye.